Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Could you, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, it's a little, it's not quite loud enough, but I-
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll turn it up when, um, I, when the meeting starts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Supervisor Miller, can we do another test really quickly? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to call the March 11th Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Before we rise for the invocation and the roll call, I want to see if Supervisor Miller has joined us telephonically. Supervisor Miller, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
All right. Now, everyone, please rise for the invocation to be given by Pastor- Oh, oh yeah, I'm sorry, we have to do roll call. We'll get you warm, so you get to warm up too. All right. Ah, good. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Carol. Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Valades.
Present.
Chair Bronson.
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present. Supervisor Bronson, participating telephonically.
No, Supervisor Miller.
Supervisor Miller, sorry.
We're, we're starting out with the bank. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Pastor Dane Miller of Serenity Baptist Church with the Pledge of Allegiance to follow by Supervisor Valades.
Would you pray with me? Father, we live in a time of incredible change. Some of it is on cycle, like the desert blooming and coming back to life in the spring. We expect that. We expect the heat to come this summer, and we know what that will bring for us. Other kinds of change, Father, bring us sudden jolts, like a phone call from the University Hospital this morning for me. And some of the other change comes, Lord, when cultures clash and when new people move into our area. And we've elected these men and women to take care of those changes for us, to use the wisdom that you've given them, to listen to their constituents, and to make those changes based on their best understanding of what that change will take, to make policy based on that. And so, we pray for wisdom, Father, for them. We also give you thanks for the freedom to have this kind of community and to take a look at those things that we need to do that will bring peace and great life to this, to this area. So, for all the residents, Father, we pray that you would surround them with the wisdom of these men and women. We give you thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We get to the most interesting part of today, I think, our pause for pause. Officer Bowden. And we have Jordan joining Officer Bowden today.
Jordan.
Jordan.
As in the river of?
No, I don't know.
River Jordan?
Or, it could be the Basque, yes. Michael Jordan at this time of year.
Good morning, this is Jordan. Jordan is our present longest-term resident. I've been bringing the long-term guys the last couple of weeks and successfully gotten them out of there, so, thank you all again. King has been adopted, so he was our more, our previous most longest resident. And this, this guy's been here since around the same time, a few days after King arrived, we got Jordan here. And Jordan's been waiting patiently. Jordan is not great with other dogs, and they say that he's better with older children. So, please keep those things in mind if you're considering a dog. If you know somebody that meets that criteria, this may be a good match. Jordan seems to be a whole lot of fun. He's got a very cute, I don't want to say deformed, his left ear, he doesn't look like the right ear. So, but it's very cute, and it gives him a really, really nice appeal. So, he's a great dog for outdoors, not nearly as excited as the last couple of dogs I brought. But, he's got energy just the same. He's about a year and a half, so quite, quite a lot of miles left on this guy. His adoption fee's waived because he has been with us so long, so it's just the $15, or $15 licensing fee. They were running a special for free cats and dogs this past weekend, and I think it extends through the rest of the week, but I apologize that I don't know for certain. You can always call down there, (243) 5969 gets you to our licensing department. Those folks know just about everything under the sun that there is to know down at the kennels. I would like to, again, thank the supervisors. Our tent is up and running. If you haven't been to see it, please come down and see it. It's, it's really a nice, nice added space for us. The dogs are, all have a little bit more legroom today, a little bit more breathing space. So, we are very grateful to have the additional space and look forward to continued improvements with the, with the shelter in general. The board has been absolutely generous with us in this past year, so let's hope that continues. And thank you for your charm in getting these guys out the door, 'cause everyone I've brought here has gone home, so, thank you again.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
You know, I'm sure District 5 would be willing to carry any part of that adoption fee that is not waived for, for Jordan here to, to find a nice home out on a pecan ranch or farm somewhere, you know? I was just saying, you know, it sounds like a dog that needs to be outside there, you know? Dick, you're turning red, it's okay. You know, anyways. Well, anyways, even if, you know, talk to folks who work with you and see if anybody's interested in having a dog like that down there in the country, it'd probably be pretty good, you know? And I understand that tent is, is bigger than the one my wife affords me in the backyard over there at home, so.
It's spectacular. It's an enormous amount of space.
That's what I hear. Anyways, thank you for coming, and good luck with Jordan there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol, though that's not-
That little dog, he looks skin and bone.
No, well-
And you gotta give him a more Irish name if you expect to get him out on the, on the boardwalk in time for the St. Patrick's Parade.
No, those, that's a dog cookie, those are not Girl Scout cookies, right?
He needs two, 'cause like I said, look at those ribs. Little Jordan McRib is what his name should be.
Still two in the last one, thank you.
Oh, I love him. He's so nice, and I gotta tell you, my four are so content being the rescues. When we were down there at Tent City, I had to say, each and every one of those dogs in the parade was my favorite breed, 'cause my favorite breed is rescue, and I hope everybody out there feels the same way. Don't adopt dogs from breeders. Find a rescue dog, they're the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Carol. All right, moving on, there is one change to the agenda. Staff is requesting on the addendum agenda, item for real property, actually, the applicant is, that that be removed, by Core Commercial Real Estate Services. So, we are, without, if there are no objections, we'll remove that item. And now, we'll move on to item five, presentation and proclamation. What's pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Motion and a second to approve the LULAC proclamation and presentation.
Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Supervisor Valades, would you do the honors?
Javier? If you'll bear with me, the proclamation reads, whereas on March 14th, 2014, the Southern Arizona League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, will hold its 25th Annual Youth Leadership Conference themed "Education is the Key to Success: Building and Strengthening Our Community." And whereas, it is our responsibility to be more proactive in helping young students pursue their dreams and goals by encouraging them to become the next generation of leaders in our community, state, and country. And whereas, many of today's young people do not pursue higher education because of lack of resources, poor decisions, drug use, or gang involvement. And whereas, the primary goal of LULAC Youth Conference, Youth Leadership Conference, is to urge middle and high school students to stay in school and pursue a higher education while at the same time providing students with vital education, health, prevention, and safety information. And whereas, since its founding in 1988, more than 100,000 middle and high school students from across Arizona, California, New Mexico, Texas, and Mexico have participated in the conference. And whereas, for over 20 years, LULAC has joined with Pima, Pima Community College, the Southern Arizona Institute of Leadership, the educational community, and numerous volunteers to plan this conference, which will ensure vital information and resources are provided to our next generation of leaders. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Friday, March 14th, 2014, to be LULAC Youth Conference Leadership Day, passed and adopted this 11th day of March 2014. Do you have a few comments?
Yes, Mr. Valades, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the LULAC Youth Leadership Conference. This is quite a milestone in and of itself, really providing vital resources to our students, middle and high school students here in the community. And so, we thank you for this and looking forward to another great year here this Friday, so.
Thank you, Javier.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's one additional item I need to mention, and that is on the addendum, Agenda Item Two, the item dealing with Davis-Monthen Air Force Base. We are going to be hearing that item at a time certain at 10:00 a.m. There are no executive sessions at this point in time, so we move on to the Board of Supervisors sitting in regular session in the consent calendar. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on any item on the consent calendar at this time? If not, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
If no one wishes to speak on the consent calendar, I move to approve the consent calendar item in its entirety.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent in its entirety. Do I hear any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on then to Item Eight and Nine, final plat with assurances. What's pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move on to Item Eight, the final plat with assurances, and Item Nine, the final plat with assurances. Both background materials have support from staff, and so that's-
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Items Eight and Nine. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Items 10 through 12, franchise license and permits, liquor licenses, two liquor licenses and a bingo license. What's the pleasure of the board? These are hearings, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on either of these three items? If not, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Madam Chair, seeing no one come forward to address us during these public hearings, I move that we close public hearings and approve Items 10, 11, and 12. Two liquor licenses, one for the Foothills Retail Plaza, the other one for Poppy Kitchen, and a bingo license for the Northwest Tucson Moose Lodge.
Second.
Oh, I should say-
Bingo Lodge.
Subject to the sheriff's report?
Subject to the sheriff's report, and Moose Lodge number 2543. I just wanted to say Moose Lodge a couple of times.
Okay, thank you.
Keep it up, they're gonna enlist you for membership.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Development Services, Item 13, zoning tech, zoning code text amendment, Renewable Energy Incentive District Amendment Number Two. Staff report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is an amendment to the Renewable Energy Incentive District, the read that was passed a couple of years ago. Its sole purpose is to add two sections of land, Sections 10 and 15 of Township 16 South, Range 14 East, except for the important riparian area designated portions to the code. The other, this is part of the Swan Southlands development, it's provided as an option. The rest of Swan Southlands was included in the code amendment, excuse me, the original code, and that's pretty much all that it does. I want to just make a note, we did have one person who raised some concerns at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that those were answered after extensive discussion, and that's all the, the public input we've had. Just want to make a note for the record, this is, this is an amendment to Chapter 14, it's not actually the zoning code, but it's the Pima County Code. It's been advertised correctly.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Valades.
I move the approval of Item Number 13 and ordinance Number 2014-5 and to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Item 13 and zoning code text amendment, COA-11-06, excuse me, and ordinance 2014-5. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on, excuse me, moving on to Item 14-
Madam Chair.
Rezoning, Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, just a note, I'm sorry to interrupt, but on 14, the rezoning, I believe the applicant should present first. I've talked to staff about this, and they've, they felt it was probably a good idea, I think. Chris, would you like to give us some feedback on the?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, because the applicant had a PowerPoint, they did a good job presenting sort of the background, it was useful that they presented first and then staff presented second. And if that's okay with the board, that is what staff is requesting.
All right, and I believe we've got a PowerPoint presentation, is that correct? Is the applicant in the audience? Thank you.
That's okay with the applicant, I hope.
Is that okay with you? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
The Urban Design Studio. Yes. I am the project applicant, and I'm here representing the Landowners Farmers Investment Company for the Continental Farms Specific Plan Project. Next slide. The first slide is, just to give you a little bit of context of the area, and most of you know a little bit about this project, we've been working on it for about years now, and the, the area that's highlighted in yellow is the property that we're going to be discussing today specifically. It's about 1,100 acres, it's called Continental Farms. But, we have been doing long-range master planning for all of the FICO land holdings. It includes about 7,000 acres of land. It includes not only the yellow areas, but also the blue areas that you see that are within the town of Sarita. And we've been thinking about this property holistically as we've been going through our long-term master planning and zoning process. It's about 7,000 acres of land, it includes about 12 linear miles of the Santa Cruz River corridor, and we're immediately adjacent to Canoa Ranch. So, when you include the Canoa Ranch property, we've got about 20 linear miles of the reach of the Santa Cruz River, and we've got an opportunity to think about the long-term master planning and future of this great amenity within Pima County and the town of Sarita. So, we're excited about the overall planning effort, and this is the first step in a long process that we've been going through to get all of this property zoned and planned and working with both the county and the town to develop the long-term management of the river. Next slide. And this image that you see on the screen is a bird's eye view of the property, just to give you a sense of what it looks like. You can see the Santa Cruz River corridor, you can see the condition of the river corridor, it's an ephemeral river, it only gets wet when there's major storms. You can see the pecan orchards to the left side of the screen, and then the, some of the existing developments within Green Valley on the right side. So, that gives you a little bit of context of what the land looks like. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we started this process a few years ago, and the first step was to go through a comprehensive plan amendment within Pima County. We submitted an application in 2011 for an amendment to about, just under 300 acres of land within the 1,100 acres of Continental Farms. You can see on the left side is the overall property, and on the right side is the area that we amended. It's actually 287 acres. We transferred it from resource transition to a combination of community activity center, as well as some medium-intensity urban land uses. This would allow for, within the community activity center, for commercial and retail services, employment, assisted living facilities, as well as medical and hospital facilities. And then, to the south, we have residential property that would allow for the continued growth of housing within Green Valley. And you can see the pattern of development, the higher activity areas are along the Continental Road Corridor, which is the road that you see that kind of cuts across. There's an interchange at I-19 immediately to the, to the west of us. So, the pattern of land uses and development is absolutely consistent with what was proposed. And this plan was unanimously approved by the Board of Supervisors in April of 2012. Next slide. Since that time, we've been working on the next step in the process, which is the specific plan rezoning. And this map shows the land use plan that's included in the Continental Farms Specific Plan, and you can see the similarities between this plan and the comprehensive plan amendment that was approved back in 2012. The overall plan includes a target of 1,500 residential units with a maximum of 1,975. The pink areas at the top of the screen along both sides of Continental Road is our mixed use activity center. And again, these uses would allow for growth of commercial and retail services, employment opportunities, medical and hospital facilities, and assisted living facilities, which are in high demand in this area. And then, immediately to the south and to the east across the river is our medium-intensity residential land uses, which again, would support the, the growth in the Green Valley area. The Green Valley Community Plan projects a doubling of population over the next 20 years, and so, this is an opportunity to accommodate some of that growth that will occur within a high-capacity corridor along Continental Road. On the wet, I'm sorry, on the east side of the railroad tracks, you see a green, a gray parcel, that is a local retail office parcel, it's a small-scale, community-based parcel that would really provide retail services to the local population, so much smaller scale than the pink areas that are more regional in nature. And then, further to the south, the yellow parcel is our largest parcel, it's about 430 acres. This is designated as our rural residential and resort parcel. It's an extremely low-density residential parcel. It has a maximum of 125 residential units that can be configured in either a cluster configuration or very large lot residential properties with conservation easements to preserve open space. This parcel has an 80% open space requirement, so only 20% of the parcel can be developed. And it also includes a small-scale boutique-style eco-resort within the zoning designation that could be nestled within the pecan groves. This is one of the most beautiful portions of the property, and we think it's a great opportunity to have an eco-style lodge that could be focused on health and wellness, culinary and nature. And for those that are familiar with the Tubac Golf Resort, we envision something similar without the golf. So, a very low-key, small-scale resort facility that can accommodate for hospitality for residents and visitors that come here to visit all of the fabulous amenities within Southern Pima County and the Green Valley area. And then, of course, the green areas on the map is the river open space, that's the portion that represents the Santa Cruz River corridor. Next slide. In addition to the land use plan, we also have been working with the residents in the surrounding area to develop a buffer plan to provide appropriate protections to the adjacent properties. And so, you can see the, the green and the red lines along our western boundary, that's a 40-foot minimum landscape buffer. And where we can, we're going to integrate the pecan trees into that buffer so that the residents that are viewing those trees right now can continue to see the, the beautiful trees along the perimeter of our property in perpetuity. And then, along the roads, along Continental Road and White House Canyon Road, we also have a minimum 20-foot landscape setback. In fact, on Continental and White House, those are scenic corridors, so those would be 30 feet minimum, and those would be planted with native vegetation as well. So, we're trying to provide a nice, beautiful buffer around the perimeter of the property to enhance the overall development of the project. Next slide. And then, of course, our open space plan, I talked earlier about the open space program. This project includes 714 acres of total open space, which is 2/3 of the entire property. And this map kind of demonstrates how that open space works. You can see the olive color that runs through the middle, that's the Linear Greenway Park. And then, there's also some tributaries that come in from the east, from the mountains to the east, and ultimately dump into the Santa Cruz River. That's our Linear Greenway Park, that's the park where we envision connections to the Canoa Ranch, as well as to the properties to the north within the town of Sarita. The plan also includes agricultural preserves, the dark green areas are areas where we envision maintaining some of the pecan orchards and integrating them into the development of the project. These trees are a beautiful asset to the community, people love them, we've spent a lot of time talking with the residents, they don't want to see all the trees go, and so, we see a great opportunity to integrate the trees into the development and really take advantage of having fully mature, healthy trees at the very beginning of a development project, which is something unique in, in most communities. The Onza Trail is another really exciting amenity that's going to be included with this project. There's an opportunity to connect all the way down from Elephant Head Road, the trailhead down there at the south end of Canoa Ranch, through the Canoa Ranch, through the Continental Farms Project, and you can see that blue asterisk that's just at the south end of the yellow parcel, that's the Abrego Trailhead. And then, it would continue for the, further to the north, crossing Continental Road, and ultimately tying in with the Sarita Farms Project, so we could have conceivably a 20-mile connected trail system through this entire area, which would be a fantastic regional amenity for the community. We're also working with Pima County and with local residents, and Chuck Cattino, I think, is here, to provide a, a local trail connection between the Canoa Preserve Community Park and the Abrego Trailhead through the middle of our pecan orchards. And this is something that we're actually going to implement immediately before we start any development with the project, to provide those trail connections so that the residents in the Green Valley area can get to that park through the pecan orchards, as opposed to having to go all the way around along the roads to use that amenity. And then, we also include recreational open space. You can see some small, light-green boxes and some trails within the yellow areas. We want to make sure that there's recreational opportunities within the residential portions of the project to promote active and healthy living within the community, and the plan will be in full conformance with Pima County's Recreation Area Plan requirements. Next slide. And then, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the conservation land system. One of the things that we had made a decision on at the very beginning of this project was that we wanted to fully conform with the CLS. And so, everything that we've done in our planning effort was to make sure that we conformed with the open space policies within the CLS. And so, this map shows the conservation land system and how it overlays on our property. And you can kind of see the relationship, if you look back at the land use plan, to what this looks like. The agricultural areas in the top are where our primary development is, and then, the large areas of open space are where the IRA and the bio-core areas are. So, we have 99.8% open space within the important riparian areas, 80.1% within the biological core management areas, and 69% within the multiple-use management area. So, we are exceeding all categories within the conservation land system as part of our project. Next slide. And then, finally, one of the other things that's been exciting about this project is the commitment to community outreach. Dick and Nan Walden have lived in this community for, or their families have lived in this community for over 60 years, and one of the things that they talked to us about early in the process was that they wanted the community to be actively engaged and involved in this project. This is unlike most projects where a developer comes in and buys land, wants to develop it and sell it. This is a family that's lived here for generations, they're vested in this community, and they want to do the right thing for the community. And so, that was one of the things that we got to do a lot of, was community involvement. We've had over nine public meetings in the community with over 500 participants over the last three years to seek community input. We've spent a lot of time with the Green Valley Council, we've had numerous meetings with the full council, as well as with many of their subcommittees, the Planning Committee, the Community Outreach Committee, a number of committees we've met with. Most recently, in June of 2013, we presented this project to the Planning and Architectural Committee, where they made a unanimous recommendation to approve this project, and I think you probably have a letter from them in your board packet. We've also given a number of study session presentations, as well as public hearings to the Pima County Planning and Zoning Commission. to the Pima County Planning and Zoning Commission. Starting back as early as June of 2010, when we presented the comp plan amendment to our, we did a detailed presentation on the River Master Plan in a study session. They also unanimously approved the comprehensive plan amendment. And most recently, in January of 2013, just a couple of months ago, the Pima County Board of Supervisors unanimously recommended approval of this specific plan to the board. And then finally, we've met with a number of stakeholders. We've had dozens of meetings with various stakeholders throughout the community. Everything from the fire districts and the chambers and the Coalition of Sonoran Desert Protection, and the school districts and the observatories. And there's been large-scale support in our efforts with the community. We've really appreciated all of the input and thought that they've provided us. And most recently, we've had been having a series of meetings with the Coalition for Sonoran Desert Protection. And based on the discussions that we've had with them, we've proposed to add a number of new conditions to approval that deal with things such as strategies for restoring sustainable native habitats, developing a native plant pallet to try to restore the native vegetation as this project is developed, to also work on enhanced wildlife-friendly features within the tributary corridors, to really encourage connectivity through our project and into the river system. And then we've also agreed to increase the width of the tributary corridor significantly to meet some of the requests related to comfortability of wildlife movement through our project from east to west, as well as north to south through the river corridor. So we're proud that we've worked with them. We've come to an agreement. And that's been, the, the MO of this whole project is really getting the community involved and, and developing a plan that everybody can support. And we feel like that's been a great success with this project. So in summary, next slide, please. We have a favorable recommendation from staff with a recommendation of approval. And I would also be remiss if I didn't just mention that Pima County has the most fantastic staff. I work in a lot of different jurisdictions, and there's not many that are as professional and competent as the staff in Pima County. We very much appreciate all of the work they've done to help us through this project, and we want to thank them for that. We also have a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Green Valley Council, as I mentioned, a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Pima County Planning and Zoning Commission, and we also have a plan that's strongly supported by the community. So with that, we would respectfully request an approval of this project by the board. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions before we go to staff? Staff?
Madam Chair, members of the board would, would like to reiterate staff is recommending approval with modifications to the text of the specific plan, as mentioned in the staff report, with conditions, including the new conditions from a memo dated March 10th yesterday, 2014, that will add an additional three conditions to the already existing 19. In addition to the memo, staff would like to highlight another concept. That is, this specific plan, the conditions of the specific plan was considering a development agreement to be entered before submittal and approval of a block plat. Staff has recognized that that could be 30 to 40 years out before they're at that level to do that level of engineering and then to submit the development agreements. So staff would like to get on the record that we are supportive of the concept of a preliminary development agreement, something that could be heard before the board at a future time, but before the block plat is ready. Staff is primarily recommending approval for a, a few reasons. It is a very appropriate conversion of a land use into uses very compatible with the existing surrounding neighborhoods. They are designing around amenities. And I believe these amenities have been identified through their public outreach. They will be enhancing the Santa Cruz, portion of Santa Cruz River, dedicating it to Pima County. In addition, they're going to be utilizing the existing pecan groves where they can, where it's appropriate to serve as screening and buffering. The overall design is one to be built around these amenities. Staff would like to point out there are a couple deviations worth noting from the code. One is with a specific plan, they're able to rewrite their code to come up with a very flexible project design. They will be making slight changes to landscaping, where they're going to use the existing pecan orchards instead of native vegetation, where it's appropriate. Staff is very supportive of that. Additionally, they're going to make some slight modifications to parking. Staff is also supportive of that request, as they're trying to be more efficient and minimize the use of asphalt. Staff would like to point out that there will be some deviation from special area policy S-11, it's a 24-foot height limit. The vast majority of the site will be meeting this policy. However, there are a couple exceptions along Continental Road, where they may be going up to heights as tall as 45 feet. Staff is supportive because they will still have significant setbacks and buffers, and that height will be in keeping with the already existing La Posada facility. Staff has three letters of support and would like to applaud the, the applicant and their team for the fact that we had an 1,100-acre specific plan. With that comes significant notice. Thousands of people received notice. We put posters up, we ran ads in the newspaper. Despite all that, something I've never experienced before, there was zero protest. So the applicants made a huge effort, and I think it paid off, to really work with, reach out and communicate with the surrounding property owners. Again, that's rezoning the size, we've never seen anything like that in terms of the overwhelming lack of protest and overwhelming support. So I'd like to thank the applicant team, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carroll.
I'm sure there are many speakers. Do, do any wish to speak on their card there?
Oh, yeah. We need, we have five speakers. And we, again, we're hearing that one item for a time certain at 10 o'clock.
Well, I want to say, first off, I was happy that we could rearrange the presentations. I do believe that having the applicant go first was a good suggestion, Chris. I know that Mark Reddy explained a lot of the, the coalition and other input that came through the process. But I also want to thank the applicant and your managers and all the people involved for what seemed to be seamless as far as the communications between Sarita and Pima County. I know this development encompasses both. I'd go ahead and like to hear, I stand very much in favor, but I'd like to hear from the speakers before any motion is made.
All right. We have several speakers. Remind the speakers you have three minutes. Please don't be repetitive. And we'll need your name for the record when you come up.
Good morning, Board. Mary Murphy, Green Valley. Once again, the Waldens go back 60 years. My family goes back 50. Everybody's getting sick of hearing from me about that, but I can't reiterate it enough. I have only just become involved with this Continental Farms project. I am elated to see this going on. It's the future, meeting the past. At the northern boundary of this is my fairways property, specifically Fairways Three. It's my flood control issues with the drainage, drainage channels, number 13 through 23, that run from the south end of the fairways through all of desert meadows. Sediment, need for dredging. It's taken me out to the river itself. I have to wonder about the health of the river itself at this point. I was introduced to Tim Campbell at my homeowners association meeting. I have, I'm scheduled to meet with him a week from Friday. He wants to see what I've got and what, and, hey, doesn't that sound suggestive? But anyways, the meeting's scheduled for Friday. And one of the, anyway. I haven't worked with guys out in the construction field in quite some time, and I'm enjoying all of this. I believe in one of my messages I left for Mr. Carroll, I said, grab a hard hat and don't wear your shiny shoes. Come on down. This west tributary, the pecan groves between the west tributary or the west loop are the drainage ways that concern me the most, is they are all the drainage ways, the setups to the things that have taken out the Continental Road Bridge in the past. It's all spelled out here. Where'd Huckleberry go? Because Mr. Huckleberry and Mr. Bernal wrote the Bible that I'm carrying around with me about this drainage way and the sediment issue. So I'm going to meet with Tim Campbell. I want to look at all the aerials. I wondered about scale models. I'm, I'm crazy about this stuff. And I look, I look forward to this project. But one of the things on Continental Road, too, that's going to have to be addressed is the road itself, the drainage way in number 17. The public safety hazard that is the roadway, the ingress egress, is the Continental Safeway Plaza Shopping Center. This was, I've outlined this before as well. Unlike the Vale situation, we're not constrained by railroad tracks. We have the luxury of airspace over drainage ways. We could fix a parking lot, give them more parking, straighten out the ingress and egress. Let's make it safer. The explosive growth to the south, now the introduction of this, let's just make it safe and, and pleasant for everybody, but the Continental Plaza Shopping Center. And at the north border is Old Town, Green Valley. And we'll talk about the inner city the next time I'm up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rodney Rec. I'm a resident of the Legends HOA, a Green Valley community of 218 homes. And I've been asked by our board to come and address you on one item of specific interest to our community. We have, we are on, abutting Abrego, about a mile south of Continental Road. Our location happens to be right abut, across the road or just south of where the major home construction apparently will occur in this development. And while it's always a lot more fun to come in opposition to a program, we really have no opposition to this program. We do have one item that's of high level of interest to our community members. That has to do with erosion and flood control. Many of us come from areas where we have had projects which were designed to alter water courses in, in the interest of better water control, and they haven't worked out all that well. In the 15 years that our community exists, we have had at least one occasion where we have seen the, the floodwaters during rainy periods cross Abrego Road. And since we have 40 homes that are, that are right on Abrego Road, that is a particular concern to us. I know from reading your staff report that there's a lot of attention that has been devoted to this. But we want to emphasize for our community the particular importance of managing the alterations to the, to the river flow pattern, alterations to the banks in ways that will make sure that there is not an increased hazard of flooding to our particular community due to the, the close nature that we have to this part of the river course, which comes very close to Abrego Road opposite our community. That is the only item that we have, and I want to thank you for letting us hear and make that point for you.
Thank you very much. Robert King.
Madam Chair, as this next speaker comes up, staff, is there some way that you can assist this neighborhood association in addressing during the process of?
Yes, and, and Madam Chair, Supervisor Carroll, I failed to mention that part of the specific plan before you today also includes an extensive River Master Plan, where they've done a significant amount of, of pre-planning and looking at the flood situation ahead of time. Normally, at this level of rezoning, we're not there. So I will be happy to share this document with the applicants, have an extra copy. And yes, they will be kept in the loop as things are developed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope, I hope the neighborhood activists are happy with that response. And during the process, I'm sure that each and every one of the team that's here for Continental Farms would be happy to give you their names and numbers and, and see if there's some concern. I'll be at, doing a town hall in Green Valley this week, and I'm sure that might be a good idea if one of your team comes to our town hall to take questions, if that would be according to your schedules, though, only. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Robert King. I live outside of Green Valley, far to the, the end of Camino de la Canoa. We have a visual of the groves. And only recently have I and some of my surrounding neighbors, about five of us, have been concerned when we saw that all of a sudden we're being rezoned. Our property used to be owned by FICO. I've lived in my area for 12 years. And on my property, about four and a half acres. Each of these homeowners that I'm representing today, about five of us, each lives on about four and a half acres. Our concern is taxation. If all of a sudden FICO's organization here has decided to come in and rezone our properties, or half of our properties, we're concerned about how taxation is going to be influencing our land that we own now. And what would be the, ultimately, what is, how is this going to work out for us? Is half of the tax is going to increase on my property? Because an arbitrary line is drawn right across my property line. How will that affect me? Some of my other neighbors, all of a sudden, their entire property is going to be affected by this rezoning. That's our concern.
Thank you. Your, your zoning will stay the same, so your taxes, I can't, I can't predict the market, but your taxes will be based on your, the zoning that's in place and the condition of the home. Chris, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Sure. Madam Chair, the applicant is only requesting rezoning a property they own. There could be some confusion from our notice map.
Okay.
So we have the subject area, and they cannot rezon your property. However, we do an additional 300 or 1,000-foot notice around their property. That might be what you saw going through your property, sir. That's not a change to your property. It's simply our notice map gives us in the world a guide of, of who received notice of this rezoning. So I want to reiterate, they're only changing the, the zoning of the property they own. They're not allowed to change the zoning on anyone else's property.
Thank you, Chris. Chris McVie.
That is the award-winning Chris McVie. Congratulations on your recent award from the Audubon Society.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Very proud to have been there.
Wasn't it like Audubon Queen for the year or something?
Oh, stop it. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Christina McVie. I reside at 4420 West Cortero Farms Road. But I am here today speaking as Chair of the Board for the Coalition for Sonoran Desert Protection, located at 300 East Fifth, Suite 120. I speak today on behalf of the public process. This is the second time in a month that the Coalition has been proud to stand before the board, having achieved a remarkable ability to work cooperatively and constructively with developers in meeting the goals of the Conservation Land System guidelines and in affecting regionally important conservation and critical wildlife linkages. The first such time was regarding Red Point, you may recall. This project has been a long time in the making. I want to give a big shout-out to David Steele for his assistance in facilitating our communication as well. There are just a couple of points that I would like to make. Not only does this project comply with the intent and spirit of the CLS, but it also, in utilizing the agricultural preserves, preserves an existing amenity. However, the pecan groves take an enormous amount of water. And over the next 30 to 100 years, as this plan evolves, there may come a time when not all of the pecan groves are maintained and/or irrigated to the extent that they are now. The developer has agreed to work with us within the next six months or so to come up with a plan for that eventuality, should it occur, so that native vegetation can be phased in and a restoration can occur, should that decision ever be reached for some part of, of that amenity. This would also conserve water. Connectivity is a critical issue to us, especially in a regional sense, what I kind of like to call the ring around the rosy. And this area, of course, is one of our critical landscape linkages. They have provided 1,000-foot widths at a couple of the tributaries that connect up to the Santa Rita's. And we are working with them and will work with flood control and their engineering and vegetation. Plant pallet. Plant pallet's going to be really critical because we're in a drought and because we don't want to see a lot of high-maintenance kinds of, of situations, but we want to see something that provides screening and habitat for wildlife. I think we're going to be able to work on that in a relatively short timeframe that will be flexible enough to accommodate the plan as it is built out over time. And lastly, the willingness to entertain conservation And lastly, the willingness to entertain conservation easements on lower-density lots in the southern portion of the parcel and buffering Canoa in particular is a key feature, concentrating the higher density where it is appropriate. Once again, I think this is an example of how the CLS can be implemented successfully and have a higher price point and a better product for the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
So the last three conditions that Chris mentioned in his report codify ultimately that six-month period for those discussions about the plant pallet and the buffers that surround those properties. So we look forward to hearing back on that, and thank everybody from the Coalition for working together with FICO and for FICO getting together and working with them. It's really a critical part of this thing, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Finally Chuck Catino. You've been waiting a while.
Last but not least.
Indeed.
Hello, Mr. Administrator and Chair and all the Board of Supervisors. After all of these other speakers and after Mark did a wonderful job, all I'm here to say is that they have been wonderful stewards of their land for the last sixty years. I've only been here eighteen, and of those eighteen, they have been donating land for schools, they have been donating land and easements for the Onza Trail, a connection just done approximately, well, it's not complete, but approximately three months ago, they connected to the Riverwalk and the Public Park Trails. I can't say enough about them, so I won't. Thank you very much. I'm here to urge passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catino.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I would just thank Mr. Katrina for coming down here, and thank you for all your community work. You know, we recognize you.
Didn't we just recognize them? Didn't we name some things?
Right. We just named the softball complex down there for you. I wanted to mention that because this is a fine gentleman who's really contributed to the area down there. We should give him a nice round of applause for all of that work that he's done. And I know there's a lot of people who help in that, but certainly, Mr. Katrina, we wanted to identify you, and it's nice to have you here in our chambers today.
Well, that concludes our speakers. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, let me just go ahead and close the public hearing and move CO-23-13-01, Continental Farms Pacific Plan rezoning with standard and special conditions as amended, including those from the Coalition of Sonoran Desert Protection as of the memo that we discussed.
And the March, I'm referencing the March tenth, two thousand and fourteen memo from Development Services?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, motion and a second to approve, subject to enclosed public hearing, subject to standard and special conditions as amended, and with the inclusion of the March tenth, two thousand and fourteen memo from Chris Poirier and Development Services. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. And I must say, I agree with Chris. I don't think I've ever seen a rezoning specific plan of this size come without protest. It's pretty amazing. Congratulations to the applicant. All right. We will now move on to item fifteen, rezoning, CO-nine dash thirteen dash zero eight Sanchez-Marine North Shannon Road. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this rezoning? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this rezoning? If not, I'm going to move to closed public hearing and approve the rezoning. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to, subject to standard and special conditions as amended. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. That was item fifteen. Moving on to item sixteen, rezoning, CO-nine dash thirteen dash fifteen, Virgil Smith and Mary Ann, at Mary Ann Cleveland Way. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, if we could hear from the staff on a report on this rezoning. I have met with the applicant, and there, like the last rezoning application, there's no protest at all, including the last time we met with staff as well. Could we hear a short presentation on?
Now, we're hearing the one item at ten o'clock time certain?
Right.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, Tom Coyle, Planning Department. Briefly, this rezoning is consistent with a comprehensive plan amendment which was done in fall of two thousand and thirteen and is in compliance with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This has been reviewed by all the related agencies, and staff recommends approval with the standard and special conditions. There is one note that I would ask. In your pack dated February thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, is a suggestion from the Planning Center for a modification to Condition thirteen A. This is fairly minor in nature, and the Department of Natural Resources and Parks is in agreement that this is a reasonable modification to the conditions. Staff would recommend approval.
What was the number on that? What Condition thirteen?
Thirteen A.
Thirteen A, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
If there's no one in the audience that would like to address us on this rezoning item, I'd like to go ahead and move item CO-nine dash one three dash one five, Virgil Smith, Mary Ann Cleveland Way, with standard and special conditions as amended, including item thirteen A on a February thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen memo for approval.
And closed public hearing.
Closed public hearing.
Motion and a second to approve, item sixteen, rezoning, CO-nine dash thirteen dash fifteen, approval with standard and special conditions as amended, and referencing the memo of February thirteenth with the change in Condition thirteen A. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Just want to say that makes a final plat for Vail as well as a rezoning, both. No opposition at all. I want to thank the Planning Center and the developer that came in today with the plan. Thank you very much.
All right. We now are moving to the addendum agenda and item number two, Davis-Monthan Air Force Base Resolution, two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-seven. I need to touch base once again. Supervisor Miller, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I would just like to clarify last week that we had Supervisor Carol speak specifically whether his votes were affirmative or non-affirmative during the meeting, but I would like to say that every vote that we've taken today, I have agreed with your final assessment of it. I just wanted to clarify whether that was an issue or not.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller. Because I asked for objections, we, and you did not object, the assumption was that you had voted yes, but thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item two, the addendum, Davis-Monthan Air Force Base in Resolution, two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-seven. The Pima County Board of Supervisors in support of Davis-Monthan Air Force Base and the A-ten Mission, requesting additional flying missions, supporting expansion and extension of base military operations. Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is a resolution in support of Davis-Monthan based on recent release of the federal budget and the President's Budget Discussion has occurred with regard to proposed retirement, the A-ten mission. What we're suggesting is that A-ten mission be extended, if possible, into the future, and if not, additional flying missions be assigned to Davis-Monthan due to its embedded investment in the community infrastructure and typically the advantages that the Air Force would receive from continuing to operate Davis-Monthan at its present level and hopefully to expand its utilization as a regional military base within Arizona. We would suggest that if the Board is inclined to approve the resolution, that the resolution be transmitted to those interests within the county that support Davis-Monthan as well as requesting action from similar jurisdictions, local governmental jurisdictions within Pima County in support of Davis-Monthan. And finally, to transmit the resolution to the Congressional delegation indicating our full and complete support for Davis-Monthan.
Thank you, Mr. Huckleberry. We have several speakers, and I see Mr. Click, you just walked in. Welcome. Did you want to address us on this item? Well, thank you. Yeah, I think this is the first time I've seen you at the Board. We have Brent Durad from Visit Tucson.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, thank you so much. I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak to you today. We really appreciate the resolution in support of Davis-Monthan. Visit Tucson, we're part of the Tucson Business Alliance. Partners in that include the Southern Arizona Leadership Council. We've got the Metro Tucson Chamber, Tucson Hispanic Chamber, Southern Arizona Leadership, many others that are part of this as well. For us, taking a look at the one point one billion dollar impact of Davis-Monthan, it's really incredible. And the fact that you're willing to step up and support this, not just the existing mission, but then also future missions, I think that's really vital. For us, we really appreciate your partnership and your leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Christopher Cole.
I don't mind getting old. I mind getting decrepit. I wore the wrong hat. I should have worn my Air Force retired hat. I've got pins for all of the airplanes I used to work on except two, A-seven and the Pocket Rocket, the missileman badge for the times I worked on the drones, both here at DM. My name is Christopher Cole. I reside in Tucson, Arizona. I first was assigned to Davis-Monthan from Udon, February of nineteen seventy-one. Worked on the AQM ninety-one A and the DC one thirty when the drones were here, then the U-two R. Went to Ubon, came back, three fifty-fifth. I was here when the A-tens got here. I can remember seeing the first A-ten fly from the base. Did a little airshow over the flight line. Beautiful airplane. Loved the A-ten. The A-ten fulfills a mission requirement that no other aircraft in the Air Force inventory presently does, and as near as I've been able to determine, no aircraft coming onboard or in the planning stages will do, at least nowhere nearly as effective as the A-ten. Yeah, it's got that big gun in the nose designed to kill tanks, but it can carry such a wide variety of ordnance, accurate ordnance, and it can sustain such damage in a combat zone and still be flyable. Now, the cockpit is armored to the point where it can take two thirty-seven millimeter hits in the same place before it breaks through. That aircraft is survivable. Very few other aircraft in the inventory are nearly as survivable. But if the three fifty-fifth goes away, there's still going to be Headquarters Twelfth Air Force and Masdik or the Boneyard or whatever it's called nowadays. I forget the exact three oh nine mission support or whatever the title of the group is. So DM is not going to go away, but given the infrastructure that's going to have to remain to support the Boneyard and Twelfth Air Force Headquarters, it makes sense that there'd be at least one active flying wing at DM. Also, support for the Hila Bend Gun Range. Luke Air Force Base cannot support the range and the missions for the range by itself. DM needs to do that. And I applaud that the Board of Supervisors is willing to stand up and support DM. I thank you.
Thank you. Linda Morales.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I feel very short up here. I am a member of the DM fifty, and on behalf of that organization, I'd just like to thank you for your ongoing support of DM, of, and especially of the flying mission. You've been there for us in the past, and we love that you continue to support us in this effort to keep the base and keep the flying mission here at DM. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Judge, did you wish to speak? Okay.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Well, come and show it off. We can't see it from back there.
And I did want to point out, we're a little shorthanded right now. Some of our delegation is in DC right now lobbying on behalf of the base, including my partner, Mike Grassinger. So I'm just a last-minute stand-in.
Thank you.
There we go.
Madam Chair.
Very good. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I'm grateful. I was as well in Washington last week, and the discussion surrounded mostly from our federal delegation about the A-ten mission. And of course, we stand ready to support the continuation and the alternatives, but at the same time, I think it's important for all of us to continue to show our support through these proclamations and resolutions that we're actively involved and we're welcoming to the base and its missions. But I also want to say, as a former honorary group commander and an honorary squadron commander, the trips that we've taken to the Barry Goldwater Range together, or the trips that we've taken to DC or Phoenix to lobby on behalf of base expansion and continuation of missions certainly pay off. The Defense Department wants to see us. They invite us to come back, and they want to know that we're involved and that we support these missions. So I'm grateful to the speakers that did arrive today, and thank you very much, especially from the business community and the DM fifty for showing your support. We're all there, and we all hope that this will end up with a good resolution for DM, the families and the employees besides the servicemen and women that put their life on the line for us all. Thank you.
Supervisor Morales.
Madam Chair, thank you. It was October of last year when Mr. Huckleberry and I went back to DC to meet with our delegation regarding the importance, not only of the A-ten, but Davis-Monthan. So I first of all want to start by echoing the comments both by Mr. Durant and by Christopher. You're absolutely right in terms of there is and is not going to be another aircraft that has the ability, the A-ten, to support ground troops. The difference between that and the F, simply the ability that flies low and slow and loiter. And oftentimes, that loitering of the A-ten is what keeps our men and women safe. There is no other aircraft that can do that. The Defense Department just spent a billion dollars retrofitting the A-ten in the last several years to be able to do all-weather combat operations and support operations. So it has a significant investment. But that having been said, the importance of the A-ten is considerable, particularly as it represents a significant portion of the employment at Davis-Monthan Air Force Base. That having been said, I think it's also important to note that we, for today, are considering a resolution that not only supports the A-ten and the further operations of the three fifty-fifth, but also supports any mission that the Air Force is willing to send our way. The truth is, the accessways to the Gunner Range, the Barry Goldwater Range, the Hila Bend Range from Davis-Monthan is unprecedented. The amount of days that flying missions can fly in, on our region, again, is unequaled anywhere else in the United States. So we do present an asset that I believe is unequal, and I am certainly hopeful, and I encourage the Department of Defense and the Pentagon to take advantage of that, frankly, to bring another active wing and mission here to DM. So with that, I'd like to move- So with that, I'd like to move Addendum Item Number Two and Resolution Number 2014-27.
Second.
And a second on the floor, and I just, prior to the vote, want to make one point. I'm grateful for the speakers that came in support of this today, and would try to urge you to perhaps talk to Mayor Rothschild and see if we can't get a similar resolution placed before the City Council. And again, thank you for coming. With that, are there any objections?
Madam Chair, I wasn't going to object, but what I was going to do is, having considered what you just said, if I could friendly amend my own motion to include distribution of the resolution to all the municipalities in the region and encouraging them to each adopt their own resolution.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, we have an amendment that will send this resolution to all the jurisdictions in the hopes that they will approve a similar resolution. And with that, Supervisor, are there any objections? Supervisor Miller, are you voting aye?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. There are no objections. Let the record show that Supervisor Elias is no longer on the dais, so the motion carries four zero. Moving on, and I want to thank all of you who came in support of this, once again. Moving on to the, back to the regular agenda.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Valades.
I will move Item 17, close the public hearing, and move Items 17 through 19, and Resolution Number 2014-6, 22, and 23.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Items 17 through 19, and Ordinance Number 2014-6, 2014-22, and 2014-23. Any objections?
And to close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing. Any objections? Supervisor Miller, you're voting aye?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there are no objections, so motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Transportation, Traffic Ordinances, Items 20 through 27, and Resolutions 2014-7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 24, 25, and 26. These are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items? If not, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Move the items and close the public hearings.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the items and close the public hearing. Are there any objections? Supervisor Miller, you're voting aye?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hearing no objections, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Addendum One, Board of Supervisors, Item One, waiver of attorney-client privilege. Supervisor Valades.
Madam Chair, I placed this on the agenda simply because there was a question brought about whether or not the actions of this Board were lawful, and I believe that this opinion actually addresses that issue without speaking about the opinion, and obviously felt that it was important to release the opinion itself. So obviously, I can't talk about what's in the opinion until we waive the privilege. So with that, I'd like to move the waiver of the opinion of Christopher Straub's February 26, 2014 memorandum.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
Yes, I'd just like to express that I believe that this is very important, that this be released, to be public, and I appreciate Supervisor Valades for putting this on the addendum, and I will second his motion.
I think Supervisor Elias had already seconded that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, couldn't hear it.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, are there any objections? Supervisor Miller, you're voting aye?
Yes, I am.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Moving on to Item Under Contracts and Awards, Item Three, Natural Resources Parks and Rec. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I move to approve the extension of the lease agreement, contract amount of $36,000 in District One.
Is there a second?
Second, of course.
Motion and a second to approve Item Three, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
I'd just like to say, the Tucson Girls Chorus Association has been a great tenant at River Road at the Meal Park, but also they give scholarships to many needy individuals across this great county, and the active participation from mentors, as well as tutors, as well as coaches, has really paid off in the long run. This is a $36,000 contract amount, but the benefits are far beyond that. I also want to say that I participated in an event last, well, I didn't participate, I attended, thank God the heat was off. It was the duets and duos, and it was Rocky LaRose, The Walk-Ups, Julie Dawson, Todd Rockoff, and Martha McSally, all singing with the Girls Chorus, and I just want to say, it was a wonderful event hosted by the great David Fitzsimmons of the Arizona Daily Star. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Carol. If there are no objections.
I just want to know if Supervisor Carol sang.
Supervisor Carol.
I sang last year, and I invite each and every member of this Board to do it. It's like running for office, you need to do it once in your life, so go down and practice with the chorus and get your tone on, and come on down and participate next year at the duets program.
Thank you, Supervisor Carol. If there are no objections, motion carries unanimously. Supervisor Miller voting aye?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting today. We are now at call to the public. Mr. Van Hanigan.
Good morning, my name is Keith Van Heinegen.
Let me just a minute, yeah, please shut off your cellphones, thank you.
Can we reset the time then? Thank you. So anyway, got my veiled voice, and here's this lovely article from our own Ray Carroll, talking about his money that he stole from District One without mentioning it. That's corruption, period. I don't care what you want to call it. You can say, oh, we voted on it. You decided right then and there to be vindictive, to be corrupt. Stop stealing from Peter to pay Paul, because Peter's getting ticked off, and that's all there is to it. Equal protection under the law used to mean something. Liberty and justice for all, you say it every time with the pledge, but you don't know what it means. It was a gross abuse of power, an impeachable offense for civil entities and persons like yourself. But what do you expect from an area that votes 84% Democrat for 72 years? Comes down to this. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America, something you continually violate on a regular basis. I know, it's such a blessing that we got rid of the duel back in the 1830s, isn't it? Not. When it comes to this, Article Two, Section Four, "The President and/or Vice President and all civil officers of the United States shall be removed from office on impeachment for and conviction of treason, bribery, or other high crimes and misdemeanors." I ask Pima County and Tucson, what the hell are we waiting for? When you talk about DM, you're all late to the game. We all know the eco freaks run everything, you don't like it. We know the city doesn't like it. Well, here's my dog tag, where's yours? I got five people buried at Culpeper and at Arlington, and I'm going back for another family member soon. You all disgust me, and by the way, I'm part Irish, and you really disgust them. Good day.
Jerry Otoboni.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Boards of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Oral Valley. And I find it interesting that Ann Day has such a wonderful relationship with the Board, go along, get along. I also found it strange that Ann Day would many times speak against a motion, and then I thought she was going to vote no, and then all of a sudden, she would vote with the gang of four. Poor thing, her reward was the roads in Pima County, the worst roads of all, the go-along-to-get-along mentality. Many of you have been on this Board for more than 13 years. When our economy was better, roads were not so bad and less expensive to fix. Instead, you spent some money on other things, definitely poor mismanagement. You need to live within your means like most of the families in this county. Also, this county is the most expensive, the most taxed of any counties. District One pays most of the taxes, 33%, which is more than the other districts. They should have, at least have their roads fixed. The other counties are. In fact, I read that all of you had some small, little HOA and neighborhood roads fixed. Now we need to do the aerial roads. District One Thornidale Road has more schoolchildren than Colossal Road. What do you have against these poor children in District One? These children, many of which ride their bikes to school, which we've already seen an administrator, Mr. Willett, who had a bad accident on his bike, and he's an expert bike rider. Just imagine one of these children falling and the injuries incurred. District One's Thornidale Road was on the list to be fixed and then removed to stop the repair of Thornidale for the district who pays the most. And to hurt the children of this district is shocking. Sounds like Chicago politics. Wait a minute, Ray Carroll is from Chicago. Thank you.
Bob Dorson.
First, I want to thank our administrator and two of our supervisors for letting me speak with them and taking a view of their office, and I'm sure in the future that I'll have the opportunity to do the same with our other two supervisors. In regard to an incident that took place on February 12th, when I was requested by Sergeant Ogden to be escorted from the lobby of this building, a report was written by Sergeant Ogden, and I wanted to share that with you. First of all, the report is based on information from Supervisor Miller's office and the security people who were in the building at the time. There was no observation by any of those people of any action that I may have taken. Sergeant Ogden is also the Sergeant at Arms, I believe, for these meetings and head of security for this building. In my opinion, the report that was filed with the Sheriff Department contains complete untruths, as well as observations by Sergeant Ogden in regard to the fact that he viewed me as elderly, weighing 120 pounds, being five foot six inches tall, and in my 70s. He also stated in the report that five security agents, as well as himself, viewed me in that lobby. There were four security people, plus Sergeant Ogden. I leave it to you to decide if I am elderly and if I weigh 120 pounds, the five-six, 70 years of age. What I do question here is whether Sergeant Ogden is actually qualified to hold the position that he does at these meetings and as security in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Murphy.
I have never heard the American flag recited in Spanish. Is there any way either one of you, when it's your turn, could do that? I've never heard it. Anyways, I won't be here next Tuesday. I'm going to miss you guys, but along about 10:30 Tuesday morning, March 18th, I will be on trial. Talk about, I stood for the flag, I'd do it again today, don't trash it. Pima County sheriffs didn't give a darn about it. I was arrested and booked into the county jail, and I was hurt in the process. It was in Green Valley, it was in my carport. I'm five foot two, we won't talk about my weight, but I was treated like El Chapo, you know? They're onto him, oh, in Chicago too, 80% of the drug trade. And I was like El Chapo, I'm thinking, you know, the masculine feminine, that would make me micromanager, short person, La Chapa, correct? And if I hook up with Chair Bronson, we'd be Las Chapas.
I wouldn't say that.
Anyway, I got the call of a lifetime last night, and I will try to communicate with you without tearing up. It was the American Legion Post 66 in Green Valley calling me to let me know that that morning next Tuesday, they will stand a flagline for me. As I stood for the flag, they will stand for me. And I am blessed, I felt so alone. I'm no longer alone. Anything to do with the ACLU will be filed after the verdict on Tuesday. The inner city of Green Valley, that this new project is bordering. Problems with the FHA-HUD contracts, stuff goes back to the original developers. You've got to keep tabs on these people. It's there, the public drainage man across the golf course behind me and everything else. And this all started with flood control. I brought this to my homeowners' association, Tom Ward, first thing that came down from them is the verdict that everybody was going to live by, and I could be damned. But my research continued, and I'm still, I can still be damned, and I can still be arrested. On January 8th, it was the three-man takedown of me in my kitchen, after a search of my I think things have gone a little too far. Like I said, if we're not real careful, civil rights will go straight into human rights, and I'll be thinking about you next week. I hope you're thinking about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Are there any other speakers that wish to address us at this point? If not, then this meeting stands adjourned.